All right, welcome. We're gonna... Here we go. Hi, we're gonna start the meeting. So, we don't need Carrie. Okay, so, welcome to the April 25th Planning Commission meeting. And Jackie, do you want to do roll call?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Horson.
President.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Nemiroff.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Burley.
Here.
Cheryl?
Here. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any edits or changes to the agenda?
I move approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Next, we are approving the minutes from April 11th. Did anyone have any edits or changes to the minutes from April 11th? No? Is there a motion?
Actually, I wasn't at the meeting. But I watched the meeting, so this might be a question for Sheila and Jimmy. But I thought during the... Let's see, what was that called? Sketch plan review for 4,500 France. Under the discussion comments, so I guess that would be page six. I thought it was pretty clear that the point was made that although that chart read four stories, that one graphic, that the intent of the work group was that it would be sort of a three slash four on the corner parcels coming around the corner for Sunnyside. And I think, Sheila, you made that point?
On the...
That map?
The street is four. The street is four. But we never articulated the exact footage. But when you look at the graph, you can see there's four on the street and then there's either two slash four or three slash four on Sunnyside.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that needed to be a comment recorded in there. If you're okay with it, that was... I thought that was significant comment that... I think the comment was, "I agree it says four here, but the intent was not to have four stories over on the Sunnyside side, but to have it step down."
To step down, but I think maybe what wasn't articulated was... I think it was assumed if you have four stories on France, that that's one unit depth. But it could... It could, depending on the depth of the unit, you could have more units. I mean, we didn't talk about how far feet back. We just said four on Sunnyside, or four on France. But at some point, that ends, right? And it goes down to two slash...
So, I guess we're just, you know... Did you... Are you comfortable with the way the minutes are?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, great. So, is there a motion?
Move approve of the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Why are you missing a mic? We've got them all down here. So, motion approved. So, the one switch on the agenda was, we do have a variance request for a setback from Lake Cornelia and no basement, but that has been continued to May 9th. So, we just wanted to make that clear if there's anyone here for that item, that that will be now heard on May 9th and not tonight. So, with that, the next one is a public hearing. It's a variance request at 5801 Abbott Avenue.
Ron Sonic with Secor Design. The applicant has submitted a 9.3-foot side yard setback variance request at 5801 Abbott Avenue. 5801 Abbott Avenue is located at the southeast corner of Abbott and West 58th Street. The proposed project includes a whole house remodel, which involves constructing a second story above the existing first floor and building a detached two-car garage. There is an existing non-conforming setback today on the north side of the property line. The house currently sits at 5.7 feet away from that north property line. The zoning code requires a 15-foot side street setback, and the applicant is asking for a variance to maintain the current 5.7-foot setback on the north side of the property while adding a second story above the existing one-story home. The existing 6,397 square foot lot currently has a single-story family... One-family home. The existing first floor will remain and be remodeled, and the new proposed second floor will generally match the exterior walls of the existing home. The lot is guided as low-density residential and is currently zoned R1. The engineering department has reviewed the subject property and the proposal to look at street utility concerns, grading and stormwater concerns, as well as erosion and sediment control concerns, and they responded back in their memo. And generally, the proposed work does not alter the existing drainage path today, and that the public... They mentioned that the public storm sewer has capacity for the proposed additional runoff that is associated with the proposed project. The proposed plans do meet all zoning requirements other than the north property line, in which the reason is why they're requesting the variance for that north property setback. The practical difficulty for the variance is caused by the existing location of the home, which was built in 1951. The existing house has an existing non-conforming setback on the north property line. The proposed second floor addition is within the non-conforming footprint of the existing house today, and will not be any closer to the north property line than the house sits today. Granted, the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and there are existing two-story homes within the general area of the subject property. So, tonight, staff's recommendation is to approve the 9.3-foot side yard setback variance for the north property line at 5801 Abbott Avenue, subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you. Great, is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? And just, you know, you can go on the side and just please state your name and address. Thank you.
Ron Sonic with Secor Design, Bill. 7330 Zine Lane, North Maple Grove. So, I'm available for any questions that the commission may have for me.
Okay, great. Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Go ahead. Go ahead. Was there one over here?
I do have a question.
Commissioner.
Jimmy, do you want to...
Hamilton.
The new garage on the back of the house that replaces the garage sets back substantially from the north property line, from where the existing one was. And there's an alley there. Did you consider clearing that garage off the alley, so you didn't have more impervious surface and didn't affect the runoff?
We were just intending to keep the curb access as in the current location where it was. It wasn't something that we had talked about with the client, as it would push the garage then closer to the house, which they have a rear porch addition right now. So, it substantially reduced the amount of yard space that they would have between the detached garage and the rear porch. Our preference would be to continue to have access off of 58th.
Commissioner Lee.
All right, so you're essentially keeping the front door at the same location, and you're just building on the second story. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think what's interesting is, when that happens, it tends to produce a house that is of the right scale. So, I think that that was... It's always preferable to sometimes see this rather than see a complete teardown. So, I appreciate the fact that you're working with existing, and your expanding is simply going up. So, that would say that it seems justified to obviously keep the same setback. You gotta go straight up. So, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So, bringing it back to the Planning Commission, are there any other questions? Or Commissioner Bennett?
I don't really have any questions, but, you know, this one is, you know, at the top of our discretionary pyramid, and, I mean, just looking at the staff recommendation, it does seem pretty obvious. You know, this is, you know, there's a non-conforming setback, so there's a practical difficulty. This is a reasonable use. And I agree with Commissioner Lee. Doing, you know, an addition renovation approach, you know, that alters the essence and character of that neighborhood very minimally, and kind of vibes with the well. So, I have no issue with this at all.
Any other comments or...
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
I move that we approve the variance for the setback according to the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on is another public hearing. It's a comprehensive plan amendment and preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan for 7250 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is a property that you're familiar with, located in the greater Southdale area on the west side of France, the intersection of Gallagher and France Avenue, 7250 France. Property is zoned planned office district, as indicated in the orange. Site is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential uses. The site is... It's really a standalone site in the vision document of the greater Southdale area. It's suggested in that vision document that this would be a mixed use with an emphasis on housing, which is what's proposed here. The applicant did go through sketch plan review with Planning Commission and City Council, and they've made a number of changes. So, this is a look at the plan. Most notably, you recall, the entrance along the west lot line was covered by the building. They've removed that. So, some of the revisions, and again, that's based on comments from the Planning Commission, comments from the City Council, and then comments from Mick Johnson from Architecture Field Office, our consulting planner in the greater Southdale area. So, the revisions are to address some of those issues. So, that was the biggest one, is removing the building from over the top of that connection on the west side. They have moved the building back to meet our 50-foot standard that we're looking for along France from the curb. They meet the 30-foot on Gallagher. They've incorporated a walkway on the west side of the building. The overall project size has been reduced. The FAR has been reduced. They've increased the green roof and created a second floor plaza. So, the specific project... Oh, and some of the... We did have Mick Johnson review the revised plans, and that was included in your memo, but some of his comments, again, all very positive, noting that the building is now a four-sided building. The building's relationship to the woo nerf on the west side of the site has been improved. That drive is no longer underneath the building. The pedestrian patterns seem to be appropriate throughout. The site has been developed with the pedestrian in mind first, bike second, cars third, and the building on the northwest corner is better scaled in relation to the adjacent three-story building. So, the specifics of the project, the proposal is six to seven stories. The seven-story element is just located on France. It's this piece here. So, it's 76 to almost 90 feet tall. There's 135 units within the building, 320 underground parking stalls, or at least enclosed behind the building, so there's no surface parking. The applicant is proposing 20% of the units within the building to be for affordable housing. So, a project that's actually double what our affordable housing policy suggests. There would be 19,000 square feet of retail and office space on the main level. I'll let the applicant go through and describe the building. But one item worth noting is, they're proposing access off of France in this location here. So, this is France Avenue. This is the north side of the property. As some of you recall, we had a proposal for the 7,200 property just to the north. And as part of that development proposal, we were wanting to get access off of 72nd Street. That was one of the things that the council and the Planning Commission were wrestling with, the issue of cut-through traffic into the neighborhood to the west. One of the conditions of that project that didn't happen, was not approved, was that this access be created off of France, so that that property to the north can share access, as well as provide access to the 7250 building. The applicant is proposing that connection. However, it's a county road, and it needs to be approved by the county, and they've indicated to us that they're not willing to do that at this point. So, it's something that we still have to work out with the county staff, working with the county to try to secure that. In the meantime, if it's not immediate, again, the pedestrian way could still go in, and we could continue to negotiate that access. So, again, just quickly moving through the building. So, this is the west lot line. There's also a trail that's proposed within this green area that would, again, connect to that property to the north. So, they've done a real nice job here of, how does this parcel fit into the neighborhood? How does it make those connections, some of those things that we're trying to achieve in the greater Southdale area? Again, you can see the 50-foot setback. Main access is off Gallagher to the north. This can also provide a connection to the property to the north. So, this request requires a comprehensive plan amendment to increase the density in this OR district along the west side of France, from 30 units an acre to 80 units an acre. Rezoning is also requested from planned office district to planned unit development. So, just a quick review of the site plan. So, we start with the base zoning. Again, this is zone POD. So, through the POD, they would be requesting some flexibility with our setback requirements, our height requirements. This is zoned for four stories and 48 feet. Again, the proposal is seven stories and almost 90 feet at the top portion of the building. Our setback requirements are based on the height of the building, so they're asking for some flexibility on all four sides. As proposed, the number of parking stalls actually meets our code requirements if there were no restaurants put into the building. A parking study was done by Wink and Associates, assuming a 4,000-square-foot restaurant. They've concluded that, should that restaurant go in there, there still would be adequate parking. So, we believe even if a significant chunk of that retail space is taken up with a restaurant, there would be adequate parking. So, as I mentioned, Wink and Associates did do a traffic study also of this area. They've concluded that this project doesn't increase the level of service within this area, and the existing roadway can support this project. Ed Terhar is here from Wink and can answer any questions in that regard. In terms of the proposed landscaping, it's all code compliant. It's over what our code would require for landscaping. Most notably was that green strip along the west lot line, and then, of course, the boulevard trees. In terms of grading and drainage, this would be handled with an underground facility. That would be subject to review and approval of the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, as they are our regulatory authority. The building itself would be made of stucco, architectural, metal panels, stone, and glass. Again, the applicant will go through that in more detail. In terms of height, we have a code requirement that talks about if a building is over four stories, it needs to maintain a greater setback from any properties that are zoned R1. So, the closest R1 properties are off Bristol Circle here and to the north. So, based on the height of the building, a 360-foot setback is required from the building to those residential homes, and that setback is over 500 feet. So, it meets that setback requirement in terms of taller buildings that exceed four So, the primary issues for consideration is the comprehensive plan amendment regarding density reasonable, and is the POD rezoning justified? First, in regard to the comprehensive plan amendment, in regard to density. So, higher densities are generally located on arterial roadways, France Avenue being an arterial connecting 62 and 494. The density that's been contemplated within the greater Southdale area study is in that 80 to 90 units per acre range. That's over the whole of the district. We've considered greater densities in the middle, in between France and York, in that 100 to 150 units per acre range. The council did recently just amend, as part of that Hazleton Road apartment project, the density in the MXC zone, which is in that middle where that project is located, up to 150 units an acre. We have approved projects on the west side of France, the Aurora on France. It's a senior housing project, but that is 80 units an acre. And also, up closer to Southdale, east of York, the old Best Buy site. I'm drawing a blank on the name of it. It's not NV Edina. They have changed it. But anyway, the density of that project is 105 units per acre. So, the density, we believe, is reasonable. Again, we've compared densities from some of our surrounding communities. It's that same chart that staff has provided the Planning Commission. The proposed density here is in keeping with our adjacent communities in a mixed-use area. Allowing higher densities allows the opportunity to provide affordable housing units, which, again, this project is providing 20% of the units to be affordable. And again, the Wink Associates traffic study has found that this project wouldn't have a negative impact on the roadway system. Lastly, in regard to the POD justification, staff believes that the POD is justified here. Provision of affordable housing, they are suggesting a public art element along the street. It's a high-quality design, providing additional public space with those pedestrian connections really on all four sides of the building, providing that connection to the property to the north, and responding to the greater Southdale area principles. We believe it also meets the POD criteria for a lot of those same arguments. And again, it exceeds our affordable housing policy, one of the goals of the POD criteria. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions for Carrie? Commissioner.
Director Teague, Mick Johnson's response dated April 18th. Rereviewing.
Right.
Would you consider that a pretty accurate summary of...
I would.
Yeah, okay. I found that pretty persuasive. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lee.
Carrie, so, when we have done comprehensive plan amendments in the past, it's usually parcel-specific. In this case, you're asking for a comp plan amendment to increase the density in the entire OR district, right? Not just for this parcel. You want... You're asking or recommending to just change the density definition of OR. Is that correct?
That is correct, but that's not different from other projects. So, take, for example, the recent Hazleton Road apartment project. The proposal there was to increase the density in this MXC district. And so, that was what was approved. Actually, it's the density is up to 100 units an acre, and the council can approve up to 150, subject to some of the criteria that we're looking at. That same holds true with what's proposed here in the OR district. It's 30 units an acre. We can allow up to 80, subject to a review and approval of a rezoning.
Could we do a limited comp plan amendment just for this parcel without having to have the entire OR district increase in density?
Well, let's see.
Isn't that how we've done it in the past?
We have not. We've done it for the whole district, whatever that site is located in. Another example would be 50th and France. That's an MXC district. That was increased to 100 units an acre to provide for that.
That was part of the Hazleton one?
Well, we have different MXC zones.
Oh, okay. So, there is no way to do a comp plan amendment just for this parcel and get the same effect? Essentially, approve the project, but just for this parcel, but leaving the OR definition unchanged?
Well, we're not changing the definition, so it still is reading, you get 30 units an acre, but we can expand it up to 80, subject to review and approval of a rezoning.
Mm-hmm, okay. Let's see. So, you had mentioned this, the office residential area is located west of France and into the Pentagon Park area. Can you show me that on the... You have a map there?
Yes.
Where that... What you're talking about.
So, that's all this pink here.
So, that would allow that kind of density in anywhere where it's designated OR. Is that correct?
Up to 30 units an acre.
Yeah.
And again, we can go up to 80, subject to this process, approval by Planning Commission and Council.
So, some of this OR actually gets... Is on the west side of France, up towards the residential areas there, up closer to 66th, that area?
Correct, all the way to 66th, which is located right here.
So, there is no way to approve what's needed to... In order to approve this proposal without having to do...
Just for one site?
Yes.
Well, in a way, it's... I'd have to think about that one. Is that a spot? Are we creating a whole new district to just allow 80 units on that site? And if someone were to propose this kind of density anywhere within this area, they still need their rezoning, and they still need approval from...
Well, we're very close to a comp plan update, so I'm guessing that there will be some major recommendations on changes, but the timing of this, I think it's a little problematic because, obviously, Southdale's still being studied, and we have had that issue with the... What was the project? The high-rise tower on the west side of France. So, that would have actually, had this gone before, that would have been permissible, correct? Without having to do another comp plan amendment?
Correct.
That project. So, that, I think, is sometimes somewhat problematic.
Actually, the density of that one was a little less than what's proposed here.
Yeah. So, okay. Let me just see if there was something else. Okay, there might have been one other question, but I'll think of it later. Thank you.
I have a couple. Affordable housing, I always have to ask this question. So, they're doing... They're providing 20%, and I know that our policy, is it 20% if it's 50% of...
It's 20%. It would be 60% at 20%.
Okay.
If they were proposing 10%, the...
The 50%. But they're doing 20% at the 50%? Okay. Thank God.
At 60%.
Oh, okay. 20% is... Okay. So, talking about... Now, I just went blank on what those towers. How are we forgetting the name of...
Astell.
God, Astell, right. So, remember, when they came in, they were providing 20% to, and then that was allowing... So, when they came in, they were providing 20% to, and then that was allowing the comp plan amendment to just be a majority versus 4/5ths, so is that the same thing that's happening here?
That would be, yep. 3/5ths vote of the city council.
Okay.
The planning commission recommendation stays the same, just a simple majority.
Okay. Got it. Okay, I think that was it for me. Sorry. Anyone else have a question for Carrie?
Commissioner Bennett?
So, aside with the issue of that road on the north side being not so supported by the county, is there anything with the change between this and the last sketch plan that staff feels wasn't as, I don't know, attended to in the change that we're seeing now? Or, have most things been? I mean, you guys recommend approval, but are there certain aspects that you still see could have been improved a little better?
I don't believe so. If there was something that we would be looking for, it would be added into the conditions?
Okay.
They've done a nice job responding to some of those concerns.
Was there any discussion, since the setback exceeds 140 feet beyond the requirement that required 360 for the single-family houses? Was there any discussion about increased height to maximize that potential?
Yeah, that'd be a question for, well, staff did pose that question when they first came in, because you recall, we did have a sketch plan for this site and the site to the north, the Crossroads Project, and that was 14 stories. So, staff did pose that question. Has to do with the economics of the project and not building something over eight stories tall to?
Understood.
At concrete construction, right.
So, the transportation study, does that ever, is there a template for that, that we ask for certain kinds of information? Because, I mean, this study seems very different from the study, the last two studies I saw for transportation.
Yeah, it's, the information is the same, you know, we're telling them what intersections to study and some of the components. I think it's more a style of the different consultants that we use. Recently, we've had SPAC has reviewed, done the studies for the most recent projects. This one was done by WENK, and they've done quite a bit of work in the city. We haven't found them to be, they do a nice job, too.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't qualifying their auto part of the study, but it seemed like the pedestrian and bicycle part of the study doesn't really match kind of the level that they set, that I was sort of expecting, so. And do we ever include transit in transportation, or no? Is that not something we?
I can recall in, some in the past, we've highlighted the transit opportunities in area. I think you're right, this one did not.
Yeah, because there's two, there should be two bus lines that go past here, so.
That might be a good idea to have a standardized list of what we need.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. And then, in terms of, you know, they designed in a north access road, and I know the, I don't know if this is a question you can answer or not, but like the Southdale Area Plan talks about, you know, adding these roads and cutting up these big blocks and everything. But, was any thought put into, like, whether the county's going to want these roads in here? Because is that going to be a continuing problem for us?
It is going to be a continuing issue for us, yeah. The greater, the vision document has been shared with the county, and, as you know, there's a lot of crossings, a lot of pedestrian crosswalks across, and when staff has presented that to the county, it's been a mixed reaction.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll pull it to the planning commission. Would you like to have presentation from the traffic study? Or do you want, at this point, or would you prefer to wait until after the applicant? Okay, maybe we'll just have the applicant come, and if we have questions, we can bring them up. Does that sound good?
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Nemroff have a question?
And this does relate to traffic. So, on page 71 of the traffic study, Carrie, I think it's the meat of your discussions with the county, the fourth bullet. So, as I interpret this, I mean, this is interesting, I mean, a couple, it sounds like you have indications that they don't approve, is that correct?
Correct. We have it in writing, too. But, we will continue with those discussions.
Okay. And then, I see their concerns, are there, I mean, that doesn't seem, the concern raised, on the one hand, seems valid and an issue to address, but on the other hand, it doesn't seem unique, and it seems like something that probably has been mitigated elsewhere. Are there situations where that kind of issue has been mitigated and successfully accomplished in the metro area? And maybe this is a question for the developer, because I'm seeing, you know, I'm seeing a kind of a smile and a nod, so maybe we'll save that question for the developer.
Great. I guess that's your cue.
Dean de Volles, DJR Architecture, 509 France Avenue.
Sheldonberg at DJR Architecture.
And also have Blank Ponge, the project developer in the audience, and Ed's here for the traffic plan. So, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to jump right to the traffic France Avenue, because that's sort of the hard issue, and it's a bigger deal than just this site, because this really flies against what the Southdale Area Study is trying to do. And I've dealt this before on the 7200 project, and I'll tell you where we had the success and how we worked through it. The issue is the county wants to eliminate as many curb cuts off of France Avenue as possible. That is a very deliberate policy to give the street a greater throughput of traffic. And if they had their way, they would break it down into superblocks just based at the lighted intersections, which goes absolutely opposite of the redesign efforts that the Southdale Area Study is proposing. So, it's absolutely adverse to what you're trying to do. What we did on the 7200 to get that right in and around, that's why I put it back in, is the planning commission at time put a very strong motion to support the access off of France, and then city council went and visited directly with Hennepin County to make the point that this is a street they want to change the character of, they want to create more of a pedestrian, smaller scale block aspect on to develop it. And so, it can be done, but it has to be sort of done with a, I'll say, a forceful nature, and you have to get above the traffic engineering department, because their goal is very narrow focus, traffic through motor cars, least interruption with right turns, driveways, stuff. But, that's the kind of stuff that destroys a pedestrian environment, because the street is geared for higher capacity, greater speed, just goes against, so trying forth. So, there is success on it, we've had success on the back, it just takes a very focused effort. And it's really important, if the goals, this commission believes in the goals of the Southdale Area Study, because it's key of those mid-block, both auto and pedestrian connections, or bike connections, to start changing the nature of Southdale. Otherwise, all these efforts will sort of be fruitless, and the street will remain a divider. So, it's really a key point, so that's why I wanted to sort of jump into that and sort of put that out before the planning commission, because our site is here, as you can see, and the idea is that we want to start developing along the Southdale Plan, where I'm showing the cursor, a secondary system of subdivision in these blocks, which provides a more pedestrian, different-scale retail opportunities, and more of a scale to the neighborhood. And this right-in route is also critical, too, because of what it does is get traffic on France, give the 7200 site access to it, and allows it not to engage on 72nd, so it keeps to the wishes of the neighborhood of leaving this a primary residential street. And it also, and maybe here in public, sort of the Petersons, it keeps some of the pressure off of Gallagher, so that their apartment complex works in this section also, because the more openings you have, the less you crowd the intersections you remain. And you've seen this in big supergrid planning, where you have few intersections, you have massive traffic, backups at each controlled intersection. So, the idea that the more opened you have, a tighter grid allows more diffusion of traffic on the major roads. So, that's a key of it. So, this is basically our site, and I'll go through sort of the highlights of it quickly, because Carrie did a very good job of walking through it. The environment you see, and you know the building, the history, and the situation, things need to be done. And the aspect where we sit in a relationship of the world on France, it's sort of, is a key parcel, because it really starts setting up what's going to happen on France, you know, in, as France transitions, it's going to be parcel by parcel, so it's going to create division. Won't happen in one grand piece, but it's how these individual moves make up the whole. So, this is sort of a key of getting that vision put forth, that's the zoning. Obviously, this is an important diagram referred to, because, again, if you look at the Southdale Area Plan, the connections and the breaks, what Mick did and what the community did is say, we want to weave across France Avenue and make it connect the neighborhood to the west, to the neighborhood to east, and do that, and these mid-block connections are crucial to allow that to occur. And, again, images of the site, as you see, fourth, the view of the site, like you said, it was an old gravel pit, which allows to put all the parking enclosed on the site, which really helps to get the urban concept developed on it. Survey speaks the ramp, you know, about the issue. So, the project itself, the key to this project is addressing the street plane and creating this boulevard with the wraparound retail that really starts to set the effect, and in breaking up the building masses, so it has a scale to it, that doesn't become a block-long building, to give that element, and the idea of working with inset balcony and a variety of shapes to give it an interest on the building. But, key is this streetscape component, and right here, these connections, because these are easements we're giving to create the mid-block connections and to serve the 7200 site, so that they can have access out this way, and access out to France. So, this site will basically transfer through our property, their residents, by car, bike, and so forth, so that site becomes connected. So, for, the other thing to note is the development of the landscaping along the two primary streets, to start establishing the street edge, and there are many deck on the second story. This is looking at building from the, towards the southeast, and again, how we set it back, and again, these inner connections that start tying the elements together. And this, I think, gives a better idea of this mid-block connection, where we want to have the right-in, right-out off of France, and then the development of the landscaping along France, which starts to set a precedent along Gallagher of how these other blocks develop, and gives a cue of how this is going to situate, because it's probably one of the first, I don't use the term, you know, it's a smaller scale, but large enough scale project that this can help create that precedent and start to develop that kind of pedestrian scale activity in France. This is a view into that gap between the building. Now, idea is that we'd like to line this, depending on 7200 site, we'd line this with retail, and then they have the reflective retail on the 7200 site. What that will allow is this become a smaller, more intimate-scale streets, because you have France, which is six lanes of the retail, but then you have a more intimate scale. So, what this starts giving this area is, I'll say, is a bit of a 50th and France quality, and creates another hierarchy of retail opportunity or office opportunity, that's not just geared by large roads, but has, something has a smaller street width across it that may be 40 feet, 30 feet, and has a more intimacy to it. So, you get hierarchy of retail, more variety of retail, more interest in environment, and this being the first piece. So, depending on how we hope to influence it, that they do retail that companion the opposite of ours, and starts to create this interest that has a pedestrian feel to it, as you go through it. And, again, this is an example of the arcade and the access going to, the one that's going to the 7200 site. So, this would be connecting to Gallagher going towards the north, and the idea of this trail, secondary system would be woven through. And, again, this is a view of Gallagher looking towards France, so the idea of the landscaping and development of these edges. So, you have an urban edge, but you also have a green edge, so you develop both the greenery, the setback, but also the activity and density that makes it an environment in which people want to traverse through. And, again, obviously, along the same with, because this is France, and the same in that aspect. And, again, this is where our building sits, but what's key is, here's 7200 parcel, here's our, you can see these mid-block collections are important. It was accomplished with the Lunds-Birley's development, they created the Y in front, and that was against Hennepin County, too, so that was the precedent you're referring to, the NV Edina right there. And it's just a matter of just pervading on Hennepin County, it'll be a battle site by site by site. When I did the two buildings that fronted, you know, the Vitamin Shop Building, one next door, had the same issues with the county. No curb cuts, push the building back, we want the view lines, all that, which are very much anti-pedestrian, but outstanding for traffic. So, you sort of fought those two, and we planned the fight through this one, and we'll prevail, but obviously, we certainly need planning commission and council aligned to accomplish those goals. A few other highlights, they say all the parking's underground, this is our retail, and this could be future retails, the setup of it, the court, the apartments above, and then I just want to roll to the, this is it, as far as I'm going to go. And I was just going to go landscape plan, but that's all right, Carrie gave a nice presentation through it. So, I'll conclude here. Any questions? Otherwise, I can ask Ed to speak to the traffic issues, so whatever commission's pleasure we'll work with. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Nemroff?
Is it too early to talk about traffic? Or do you want to wait?
I think, let Ed stand up here with us, talk through it, and then we can talk about traffic.
Now, did you have something you wanted to say about, to make a presentation about traffic first? Because it seems like that is a big issue for this project, and, as you said, for the area in general.
Sure.
Did you, is there anything you want to say? I can wait.
Well, I think it's been covered pretty well. I'm Ed Terhar with WENK Associates, and I completed the traffic and back study. I think the summary that Carrie gave was very good, and some of the issues that have been talked about are definitely out there. The Hennepin County access spacing guidelines, butting up against the desire to have the other access points, and I can see that being an issue. So, I'm certainly able to answer any questions, unless you want more specific information.
Okay, so I have a couple of different paths. First of all, York Avenue has curb cuts, and recently had new curb cuts put in for what I would, it's curb cuts for previous buildings, such as Cub Foods and Chipotle in the mid-block, and recently curb cuts were put in for what I would consider to be a comparable building, the Onyx. Do we have data on how that impacted traffic, and particularly how it addresses the concern raised by Hennepin County regarding, you know, three-lane weaves and?
I was not involved in that study on York, so I don't know how that was accomplished, but I know they are concerned about France, because it does carry a considerable amount of traffic, 30,000 vehicles per day. I don't know that York is quite at that level, but I'm not exactly sure how York was accomplished.
I was just thinking, I mean, you know, there might be, there might be an analogous situation to show it works.
Well, the easiest one is the Lunds-Birley site, because that was recently put in, the Y connection. We have an example right there, that was done four years ago, three years ago, roughly.
Recently.
Yeah, so I think that's one, and, you know, now, this is just me observing, not a professional in traffic, but it seemed to have minimal effect in terms of traffic. And then, if you look at Centennial Lakes, the retail center, that has a mid-block Y, that's been there for maybe 15, 20 years. Same situation, don't see that as a, it just affect France Avenue. So, you have examples of mid-block connections that have been done, one recent and one few years ago, and these traffic seems to work well in both cases on those.
So, thank you. I think that's just something worth looking at. Second, in the traffic study, we have Figure Six and we have Figure Seven. Figure Six is essentially AM peak, and Figure Seven is PM peak, weekday. And if you look at the level of service, it looks like the main concern perhaps is on, in the AM for Gallagher, you see the D's and the E's going southbound, and you see C's and going northbound. My guess is that it's, particularly if they're concerned about three-lane weaves, it's that southbound turning on Gallagher is the area that they're primarily focused with, is that?
Yeah, when they're talking about the weave, they're concerned about traffic coming out of the proposed right-in, right-out, that would want to go, make a left turn. So, they'd be going southbound, they'd want to make a left turn at Gallagher, either to go into the development there or to make a U-turn. So, picture yourself on the site, and you want to go north on France.
Yeah.
And you turn out of the right-in, right-out, because maybe that's closest to where you parked. You make a right-hand turn, now, there's three lanes you have to cross to get over to the left-turn lane to make a U-turn. That's when they're talking about the weave, that's their concern with the weave, is that people are going to be cutting across three lanes of traffic in a short amount of distance to get to the left-turn lane. And that's the same argument they had with 7200 France. It's probably the same argument they had with other access points. It's probably the same argument they had with other access points, too.
Okay, so what if that did not allow, what if the access off your building did not allow the left turn onto northbound?
Right, but how do you control that? I mean, if someone makes a right turn out of the site, they, there's no way to control them after that. They can, if they want to make a left turn.
They're going to make a U-turn.
They're going to make a U-turn, they're going to get over to the left-turn lane, otherwise they have to go all the way to the next intersection to make a U-turn, and they're likely not going to do that. They're going to try to get over.
We did provide the Gallagher, you know, both options, so obviously, would some people try to do this? You hope people do this motion like that, and that's how provided two easements across our property, accomplished both actions allowable, so that, you know, the common sense of this, would a few people cheat that way? Potentially, but, you know, again, there's risk anytime you put an intersection on a street. But in terms of trying to create a scale and calm traffic, these mid-block connections is what accomplishes it. And the less breaks you have, the faster traffic goes. So you, you know, there's going to be a give-take, and from a pure traffic standpoint, Ed's absolutely right, less motion, less turns, less, the more you can just zip through. But the more you cut off these individual connections, traffic goes at higher speeds, street nature changes, urban design aspect changes, and so, you know, part of this, and this goes back to Celtic Plan, these are intentional breaks in France to slow traffic and change the nature of the street. But some of this does go against, you know, pure traffic engineering policies, and that's kind of the balance from saying, so the compromise, excuse me, is mid-block connections, not a driveway every 30 feet, but saying, can you compromise providing mid-block connections, which helps advance the goal of the South Taylor study?
So this is a, thank you, and it sounds like you guys have really given a lot of thought to it. So this is, my next, perhaps final comment is one that I have not given a lot of thought to, it just came to me, and I don't even know if I like it, but I'll verbalize it and let you think about it, and let staff think about it. What if that access to the building was not available 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM during the morning?
Once again, that's a very difficult thing to enforce. I mean, you can put up all the signs you want, you see them in Minneapolis on Lake Street where they say no left turn from 7:00 to 9:00, and unless there is someone, a police officer or someone there enforcing it, they still occur. So I would say that that is, that would not be an effective solution, it would still occur.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? There's got to be. Commissioner Lee.
Oh, is this just traffic?
No, it could be, I think it's open.
Okay, so you're offering 20% affordable.
Correct.
Units, right on this site, on the project.
On this, this piece right here. And the way that would work, it's at 6% median income, so the median income of the metropolitan area is about 74,000, 75,000. So at 60%, that equates to about 41,000, 42,000, which that would be the income restriction on those units, which is basically teacher salaries. And so that's a number we thought was 20% wider bracket than go into 10, 50%, because it provides more opportunity to provide supportive housing in Edina, especially in desired locations that have all the services, such as this area that has bus, bicycle, you know, amenities, these, this is the right area in which to put affordable housing, because it's where people want to live, because it has those elements that people need to exist, work, and have all the personal needs, between medical and everything else. So that's the idea, yeah, that's mixed in within the project.
So how many units is that going to be?
So it's 135.
26.
26 units.
26 units, and you were only required to do 10%, is that correct?
Correct.
So what's, what's the reasoning behind that?
It, it's, it's the idea that there's a need to make it work. The idea behind it is, at 10, it doesn't do enough to really impact, I know it's a city policy at 10, at 20, it's a ratio that works with the building and provides the opportunity, and 60% I think is a good number to hit, because at 42,000, I think, is a salary, it's a number that works for a lot of people. Because if you go lower, at 50%, now you're getting in the 30s, at 40, it grabs a lot more people that are involved, if you think of some of the secretary administrative help in the city hall, librarians, teachers, educators, at 42, reaches on a lot more people and provides more access to the units than going at a steeper discount at 50% median income, because it's a restriction. If you make over at $42,000 number, you're not eligible. So we wanted the number a little bit higher to incorporate more people in that opportunity. So that's how we arrived at that ratio.
Okay, now, my understanding is that requirement is because of the PUD designation. Had it just been office residential, there would not be a requirement, not office residential, what is it, zone now?
POD.
Yeah, so it's zone POD now.
POD, POD.
And housing is not in allowed use, so they need to rezone it. We require the PUD because we can require affordable housing through the PUD ordinance.
Okay, so are there alternate zonings that would have worked for this, this project other than PUD?
Potentially, we didn't explore that option, but the planned residential district four, I believe, which is the property to the west.
Okay.
So that would be a similar zoning that.
So let me ask you this, if you, if there was no affordable required, would you have provided it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, here's the issue, and you know as well as we do, the housing crisis is accelerating, and it's become severe in this case. And so if you don't start chipping away at it, it really becomes regressive, and Edina has a real potential of just pricing out their own. And you've seen that in the Casa Residential Neighborhood Single Family, and you're seeing in the apartment products that are being built. You know, there's one project, and I won't mention it, well, you know, the Opus Project opted to buy out of the requirement, which I think was unfortunate, they, they paid cash in lieu of providing affordable housing, which you can do, it's allowed, but it doesn't get to solving the problem or addressing the location. And you want to put affordability where the demand is, because the same criteria why I would live in Sevignan would be the reason why someone at 42,000 wants to live Sevignan. So it's really, it's a, it's a policy that's good the city has, but it's also, I'm going to say sort of a social requirement that really needs to be dealt with, because if you don't get at it now, it only gets worse, that's a problem, it just, the differential gets higher and higher, and the costs get more and more steep, and then less and less people have opportunity in this area, and that starts applying to our own internal staff and our internal residents is where it starts to affect. And Edina can become very rarefied if we're not careful at the rate of development that's occurring.
Thank you. Any other question?
Now, the way I read the POD zoning, you could actually probably put a four-story building in there, a four-story medical office. What, if you were to do so, what would that impact be on traffic then? That's a hypothetical question.
Well, in the hypothetical question, I'm going to go to the site plan, because I want to show you what happened with the four-story building. Or you want to?
It might be good for Ed just to comment on.
Oh, do the traffic.
Traffic patterns versus.
Yeah.
So what, what's the question?
So we need to replace this building, as is, with, which I believe is possible, a four-story medical office building, which would be the.
Oh, with the four-story medical, okay.
Medical office, what would that do to the traffic situation?
Well, it's hard to say, I don't know the exact size of the building, the size did, results in the trip generation, so the trip generation is dependent on the size, but medical office is a, is a higher generating use than, than regular office and even the apartment use. So I would say, without knowing the exact sizes, I would think there would be, that the impact would be higher. Exactly if there, if there would be any problems or not, I wouldn't be able to answer that, but I think it would likely be higher.
Kerry, I think you're, I think by quote, I'm guessing about 60,000 square foot building would be allowed.
Yeah, be about a 65,000 square foot medical office could go there, by right.
And the building today is how big?
55.
55?
Correct.
So it would be slightly more impact than, than today, so I guess it would be, it would probably end up being similar to what we're showing in here, because we do show a small increase for this development, even over the existing. We're talking a slight increase over the existing, so it would maybe be comparable or a little bit more. I wouldn't see it being double or triple or anything like that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, I'm just going to jump in. So can you kind of walk through the site plan again? I'm still kind of a little confused on where the traffic is on the west side, where the cars are, and where the pedestrians are.
Okay, I'll use this diagram.
Yep.
This is set up as a vuner for curbless street, but you see the arcade right through here, so the idea is that there's a defined pedestrian area running along the building, but it's going to be a curbless street design, so it has that kind of flexibility on it. And that's the west side.
Where do cars pull in?
So cars right here.
And they go all the way down?
And they go all the way down, and then in the, let me go to the site plan at the end here. So cars can pull in here, and cars can pull in here, right-in, right-on, on France.
Well, if you get that access, let's just talk about, so right now, you've got it, so they come off of Gallagher, go into the site, and go in and out on Gallagher.
Correct, and, and France, yeah, so Gallagher is established, and we hopefully to get France.
Okay, so again, if you go back to that other picture, so you're really showing, so really the true pedestrian.
Right here, this gives you a feel for it.
So it's still kind of underneath, but that, that's, it's a little, it's more open than what it was before, correct? So, okay, because there's going to be a lot of cars, I just, in reality, is it going to be like that, where people are just kind of walking along?
There'll be a mix, I mean, you know, the development next door may equate to, you know, we want the two access, because that's important. If we get the one, does it work? Yes. Does it cause harder impact on the Gallagher-France intersection? Yes, so our goal is to get both access, because it's just a better urban design, and if we fold on this, anything that follows us will set a terrible precedent, and that South Taylor Plan won't vision out as everyone expects.
Right, so will you move forward if you don't get that access onto France?
We will move forward, but we will continue to fight, and we'll design it in, and we'll continue to fight for it.
Okay.
I mean, we, we plan to put that easement in regardless, because we'll always keep pushing for that right-in, right-out on France.
Okay. So then, on the west face of the building, I, you know, correct me, John, if I get the architectural terms right, but it's pretty flat and boring, and I, I love the fact that we are now starting to have, you know, full, the, each side of the building facing the street is active and just, you know, but it still seems like that's still a back, you know, is there a way that you could provide a little bit more articulation on the west side?
There, there could be, I mean, we did step back the upper story and have decks up there, and we broke it up in a mass here and a mass here, and inset the balconies. We don't want to get it too much going on, you know, so you try to find a balance, too, because remember, there's going to be another building opposite this, so you sort of want to let the front have the most depth and articulation, and start simplifying a little bit, otherwise it's a little bit too much. And you can see here, this probably shows it better, it's set back, there's a mass here, there's a mass here, there's a reveals here. So in our opinion, I think it really is scaled, appropriately, we did one move with an angle here with this piece to add more detail, but there's a limit on how much you can do that stunt before you take the cost out of sight, and then adding the arcade element. So I think it does have a good level access, we'll keep detailing, developing it, but, you know, I'm not going to take it to this level, because this is really special for the corner, yeah.
Yeah, just again, because you're trying to treat each, because that is, you know, another kind of street side on that, okay.
One other I have to add there is if we are creating a smaller scaled side street, then having a little bit of, sort of, let's just say, a calming gesture in terms of simplicity on that side, where we could have a companion piece across the street, where you don't have too many crazy things going on, it gives a, a little bit of a break in between, because that's sort of the mood that we're looking for in this smaller scaled street, not to have all the hustle and bustle of St. Francis Avenue, so you've got something that's a little more simplified on the, on the north side of the building. So that's part of that intent.
Because our hope is that we have, we set this side, if you notice, we didn't put any landscaping, so the hope is that when 7200, that there's a mirror image building across the street with retail, to start developing that scale that comes through here, and that shopping district within it.
Okay, well, maybe you just look a little bit more, what you could do.
No, thank you.
Let's see, I think that's, okay, so this is totally, you can tell that I've been watching a show on HBO called High Maintenance, full disclosure, but one of their shows was, you know, with the affordable housing units, they didn't get the rights to use all the amenities.
There'll be no backdoor, or what they call in New York City, a poor door.
Well, they can still use the pool and all the bike, okay.
They have the same rights as any resident would.
Okay, that's a pretty funny show, but just wanted to make sure that that wasn't true reality. Okay, great, any other? Commissioner Green? Uh, Green, Commissioner Bennett.
Mostly comments, I feel like a lot of things were addressed very appropriately and, you know, desirably, since the last time we spoke and saw you guys in the presentation. So I commend you for those changes, I mean, this visual right here that you have up, I mean, that's a beautiful-looking building with a, a pretty cool public realm, and that's kind of how I judge it, where am I going to see this project the most? And it's down there, so great landscaping, great activated spaces along every side. So I guess a couple of my comments, and not like you can do anything about it now, but just to keep, keep it prominent is, is the height, I feel, you know, whatever we can do to encourage more height along France, you know, that third of the building that fronts France, I think you have an opportunity, I mean, you had an opportunity to really go up there, and that helps just vary the building, because minus this angle, it does look like a box, it's a nice-looking box, but it's what we're seeing more and more of, and there's great breaks and a great reveals, but, you know, to have that kind of height right there along France, that could really open the opportunity for an even better public realm, and kind of what, at least us as a planning commission in general support, I mean, we supported Estelle, not we, but it was 7-2, you know, we would like to be able to start signaling some more of that precedence along France, granted it respects the nearby single-family homes, but former Commissioner Hobbs has mentioned many times, just we're starting to see this kind of product of, I mean, it's, it's almost filling this mini-block, you know, from curb to curb, it'd be nice to see a little variation in there, because if you get that height, then you could use that elsewhere. So that's just my comment, and not really for you as much as it is to counsel to. On the north side of the building, you had that one right there. Can you walk me through what the pedestrian journey would be like if you're walking north along the east side and decide to go west, where those cars are going?
Okay.
If you're walking along the east side of the building by the coffee, the retail.
Here.
Yep, and decide to go west, what, what's going on there?
So what we hope, now this depends on 7200 develop, so I got to talk through how we're developing this. We set this part up to be flexible, that it become future retail, that if 7200 is developed with companion retail, then we'd have retail on both sides, so you have a retail street that have, that would be activated all the way back. You know, right now, we got to sort of treat the situation we have, and so we got the retail going back to this point, and then we put the building entry here. So the thought is we continue that, so then you have this idea of this pedestrian and car street side with retail both sides, to have that experience going all the way back. Today, the retail stops here, in the future, we hope to bring it all the way to the back of the building. Depending on 7200 France fills. And then back to your second question about height, which is very good, there was a question that, you know, someone said, why not build it four stories? And I said, it could, I could build it four stories curb to curb and make it work and get the same density, so we sort of compromised pulling it. So, we sort of compromised pulling it in by creating these easements and we picked a six, seven story scale to work with. So, we're sort of halfway to what you're thinking. But we could've made this fit at four. It would've worked, but I think it would've been deadly in terms of scale, green space, the landscape you're mentioning, the development and so forth. So, this is sort of the middle ground we took on this project to make it work.
Yeah, I guess just with what we know, the potential for Southdale to be and kind of how we're tailoring the, the, it's not a small, the huge area plan. I mean, a lot of that really is with height and making the most out of some of those spaces. And, you know, surely along France, there is potential more than what we're seeing and that we know that there's a tentative nature in the development community from the signals that the council's motion. So, I at least wanna continue to support the height where it makes sense. You know, not the entire site, but to also break up the mass of the building. So, I guess still on this, you know, if this is a vuner for whatever you wanna pronounce it as, people are coming off of France, they're gonna have some speed. And most of those streets that I've seen that are shared, it's still very much more of a pedestrian feel. And this kind of looks like a road without a sidewalk. And it looks like people would have to jump a bush to get onto that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I couldn't find the landscaping plan. Cause the render picked up on it, but I can't get, let's see if I can get it.
I just wanna make sure.
No, I don't have it. And I could show you on the, it's actually, let me get to Carrie's part. I can't get there. Anyway, the landscape plan actually has the, what's that? Oh, yeah, click it. Oh, yeah, let me do that. Thank you, Carrie. Uh, this one on the right, I assume? And, okay, who's, uh, who scrolls, all right? Let me, there it is. Okay, so here's, here's the landscape plan development. You can see the sidewalk definition here, the bushes, the connection. Yeah, and that's in the rendering. And you can see, here's the pedestrian experience here, here. So, it's set it to be a vuner, but it has defined areas within it.
I just, I couldn't see it from the rendering.
We took a little artistic license.
Which is good. Uh, and then my, my last comment, can you just, the south side of this site, I mean, originally, you know, we're going way back. I mean, it was a pretty Marvel look at what you could do for the bicycle route that's on the south side of the site. What is being done for that in this current plan? It wasn't really talked about much, but just if you could reiterate that.
So, the bicycle trails on this side.
The south side.
It's on the south side. And the idea you wanted, so if someone pulled in, what we're, or what we're gonna incorporate back in, actually, actually put in this corner, it may be, cause we have the retail, there was actually a bike station, a bike restway that would be a part of it, cause eventually this bike way will establish. You know, the first vision had the bridge, but we couldn't get the counter go with us, so then it worked out. But the idea is we do wanna acknowledge that, because eventually this will get better and better developed. And so, we're gonna allow that complement piece in here at this corner to start establishing that network for the bicycle development that'll occur here. It may be five years off as we keep building the system, but it will come. It just will take longer.
So, on that south side, it looks like there's almost double sidewalk, you know, one right along the street and the one closer to the building. So, I mean, is there a potential for, you know, that one right along the street to be shared between bikes or dedicated?
If, if yes. And, but the answer is right now, the bike path is here. So, we're gonna have to work with Hennepin County, you know, the great ones with the traffic to see how they would help us accomplish that if they allow it to cross over.
Yeah, okay. No, I, there's a lot of space to work with, so just wanted to hear your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go, Commissioner, go for you.
So, in terms of the, I'm looking at the bike parking, both the external for the visitors and the internal for the residents. And the external, at first I thought it seemed kind of far away from like where they would go for the coffee shop or whatever. But is your idea then that it's kind of all the parking, whether it's cars or bikes or whatever, is kind of all located on the one side, on the west side there, or?
Yeah, cause the, the cut is right here to get into the garage.
Okay.
So, there, yeah, and it's right in this location right there. So, that's a connection in terms of sidewalk and connectivity and all that area. You know, we do have a bit of a grade here. So, you see where we had to start transitioning with steps and plazas and make that, cause France actually starts dropping down as you go north. So, we're starting to play with grade and transitions to keep, to help really establish this ballpark and develop a hierarchy of public spaces in there.
Okay, great. And then, we've had several buildings recently that have been approved and the park, you know, they all said they're gonna have bike parking and they end up having bike parking that's really old fashioned, you know, those sort of crate shaped things that you kind of attach your bike to that cyclists don't really like anymore, cause there's so many different types of bikes. Is this gonna be, you know, like the built in into the concrete U-shaped ones? Or what kind of parking were you thinking?
Well, actually, the idea is we're thinking of actually indoor protected bike parking within the building. Cause normally they're out and it's really a problem back in the winter. So, the idea is we actually provide a corner space in the building on the main floor.
Now, that's for residents or for?
For both, actually, yeah.
For both, oh, okay, wow, okay.
In one part may be sealed for us, that part may be open to the public, but to provide that. The idea is sort of treat the bike as equal status with the car and have the same kind of convenience of access.
Okay, and then, cause I also noticed that there was, and I don't know if the render is, what, is gonna be part of this work or just fantasy? But the, there's a, not only is there a crosswalk conduit France and, and Gallagher, but also next to the vuner. And so, is that part of this, where you're gonna be able to cross to the others, to the bike trail?
We hope, again, the idea is if we get, you know, can we get connection here? And this is working with city traffic to get a crosswalk here that allows, because what we hope, and this goes back to the idea, Southdale planned the secondary pedestrian connection that ran north-south and that's right in that plan. So, we hope to have a crosswalk here and then we hope to work, you know, in Hennepin County to see how we establish this to make it more of a safe, comfortable connection, because the hope here is that people feel comfortable walking over to Centennial Lakes, which is right here. So, that's really key of how we get these connections across these major streets to start weaving these sites into each other.
Right, cause the, you know, Adina doesn't have much dedicated bike infrastructure the way this, this line is. And it's brand new, in fact, it's not even really gonna debut until January, or June 3rd. And so, but already people are using it. It's like this huge amenity.
Correct.
And it goes from Hopkins to Richfield, you know.
Yeah.
So, so it's sort of like this bicycle superhighway through the city and people who live there might work in Richfield or people who live in Richfield or Hopkins might work at the coffee shop or something, you know. And so, so I'm concerned about people crossing Gallagher, even though it's not a very busy street, you know. I wanna make sure there's good opportunities for people to cross there. It sounds like you've thought through a lot of this.
Yeah, that's important, because this, this, that part of that superbike highway goes right through here and cross over on the same one with the bridge over 100 and the bridge over 62. In length, comes along the south side of Gallagher, goes through Centennial Lakes and then on to the Richfield. And so, this is at that point and this is where the secondary access, that crossing point would be there, so.
And then one last question in terms of, you know, there's two bus lines. The six goes past here and then some, I think, express bus line goes past here. Any thought for any amenities for the people who are taking transit?
We will work with MTC. That's why I can't promise it, cause sometimes they have criteria when they want bike stations and where they want and so forth. But our hope is, and that's why we have the setback, to allow that to occur, to provide a protected area for bus patrons. So, yeah, that is our goal, but we haven't worked through with MTC. That's an whole separate route you gotta go through to get their analysis permission and so forth to work that. We're dealing with the same thing in St. Louis Park with the Bridgewater Bank headquarters on that. But the answer is yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Strauss, you could? Commissioner Nemra?
Thanks. On the west side, so the, you, you have a pedestrian area right next to the building.
Correct.
Excuse me, is that the west side? That, the?
Let me go back to the site plan.
That's where the vuner is.
There it is. Oh, it's actually a nice texture. But yeah, we have pedestrian here and here.
Okay, so on the, on the very west, you have the pedestrian right there. And then you have what was identified as a vuner, although my understanding is that may become more of a road?
Well, it's a combination of road, cause it's serving, when I say a road, it's part of that mid-block connection that would serve 7200. So, it's, it's doing dual purpose, where we have a defined pedestrian area. But the idea is we wanna sort of set this up more of a curbless design. So, it feels more gracious. So, that's really the thought of how this is set up. So, the hope is that, you know, we said this could have this retail interaction that could occur here.
I think it's very appealing.
That branch and the deal. So, that's really the goal of this.
I, I think it's, I think it's an appealing feature of what you, what you put together. And then to the west of that, my understanding, there's kind of like a, a green path. Is that correct?
Well, this, yeah, there's a landscape buffer here. We may keep the path here, depends on, I work with the Petersons in terms of defining this and how they wanna integrate to it. If they're interested, we'd love to tie in their pedestrian network into ours.
Okay.
And we've had conversations, so that's something we need to.
It's not necessarily right now planned to be a walkable path or?
But it could be, because it.
It could be.
Yes, because it depends if they want like dense screening or are they willing to network in? And we don't know the answer to that yet.
As, as everyone probably knows, amount of landscaping. And there's also some grade changes between our site, their site. So, you know, some coordination would have to happen for the, a connection to occur there. But the pedestrian path right now is sort of dedicated to that, the eastern edge of that, the vuner on the, on the west side, so under the building. That's sort of the dedicated area for pedestrians.
If we could tie across, would be outstanding. Cause in a Peterson interview for the job, they sort of created Garden of Eden out of the Cedars of Edina. And the idea is that we'll sort of really keep that greener, they establish. That's how you, you saw that development of landscaping, as Kay mentioned, over landscape, cause they're trying to pull what the Cedars of Edina have done and pull it up to France Avenue, you know, where they have a very lush, well-developed landscape. It's unique, because you start driving that area, suddenly the environment changes if you've driven from their property versus what's not their property. There's a very distinct change of landscape and street scale and we sort of wanna keep that theme pulled up in our development, cause it really sets up a nice feel in that area. It's unique, basically, to the Twin Cities.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's unique to the Twin Cities what they have done.
I think that'd be a very nice feature. I, a couple of comments about it is, I think that I would, I would, I guess I'm asking two things. One is if the, you know, I think that becomes a more important item if the access off France Avenue isn't provided, because then there'll be more pedestrians that'll want it, you know, that you're gonna lose some of the road, more pedestrians will be pushed off the vuner. And to have that green walk feature would be all the more, I don't know what the grade, you know, all the more to the positive for the, for the site.
If the right and right out goes away. Yeah, if this goes away, it'd be pedestrian. Though, and you'll probably hear in public testimony, the Petersons really wanna see more distribution of traffic, cause they don't wanna see it all concentrated here. So, there's a plus minus. But, you know, we'll, you know, our endeavor first is to keep these mid-block connections. I think it's just good urban design, car and pedestrian. But if we have to, if we lose our battle, you know, this becomes pedestrian. We'll work with it that way.
And then my follow-up is, although, you know, I feel like I'm almost suffering from short-term memory problems. We just had winter and it just ended. And if you do develop that green, I would hope that you come up with a way to make that usable 12 months of the year, because, because of the reason, particularly if the France Avenue access isn't allowed and then you're pushing more cars to that access there, to have that additional pedestrian path, I think it'd be a very nice thing to have.
And our intent is to have, make it work year-round, so absolutely. Otherwise, you're self-defeat what you're trying to do.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have another question? Okay, so we'll open it.
What's that?
Go for it.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so talking more about cycling and walking. The, France Avenue has been on the bike and pedestrian plan for 2008 and 2018 now, the one that was just approved. And, you know, obviously it sounds like Hennepin County isn't the best organization to work with, but has any thought been, I mean, does this development as is reasonably allow any kind of bike infrastructure on France or anything?
The answer is yes, cause we set up two hierarchies, a sidewalk here and here. So, this, this secondary sidewalk here could be double as bike infrastructure. So, we set up like a dual path system. It could occur if the system ever gets established.
Okay, great, thanks.
Commissioner Lee?
Just some comments, if you could go back to the elevation. One thing I was thinking about the, well, that corner shot, actually, that bird's eye view was actually when we were looking from the France side.
This one?
Yeah, that's great. You know what I find interesting about this is it is different from everything we've been seeing recently, which is just very monochromatic, four-sided. Sure, the height varies, generally gives us a pretty good pedestrian realm at the base, but pretty uniform on top. So, I find your geometry here is very interesting in terms of the stacking and I really find the, the tilt out of that crown very intriguing. The height of it, I find very appropriate. I think on the west side of France, we haven't quite yet decided in terms of where that should be. Often, we're using the Champs-Élysées as sort of that goal of a big boulevard. I know that's been discussed by the Southdale Group, but the Champs-Élysées is actually seven stories.
Correct.
It's not a single high riser. So, there's been some discussion about what would that do? Would it, if we, if we line it with tall buildings without, you know, any break in it? So, in some ways, I find this, this height probably the best compromise of all. The location, the site makes sense for it. I think it gave you the greatest amount of flexibility with that Gallagher. And I, I find your, your points and arguments about the, the north access off France to, to make a lot of sense. So, I do hope that the county is able to kind of rectify that. I think the height, again, is appropriate. I was taking a look at the Winter Solstice shadow study. So, even at this height, and your tallest part is on the France side, you will start to impact some of those homes on, I believe it's Bristol Court. So, I think that, again, and just barely, but any additional height could actually reach them on the, the December 21st.
So, and then, and then we did peel the building back on the side to even, it steps back on the west and north side to reduce the shadow. So, it steps on that corner for exactly what you're mentioning.
Yes, yes. So, over there on the far lower left corner, that's, that's the one that I'm concerned about, where you're just touching on that, yep.
Correct.
So, I think the height is appropriate. It's, it's, it's amazing that you are able to do the 20% units and have figured that out. I think one time you came during sketch review, we were talking about, you know, make sure that, that the height is justified by, by sort of the pro forma of the finances that you face. So many times, we're asked to look at sketch proposals and then eventually they turn into proposals, but it, in my mind, is arbitrary, 17 stories, 18 stories, 19 stories, 20, 21, 27. What is the right height? And I think you've made a, a great argument that you've studied this. This is what works for you. It works for, for the, for the city, the public realm. It works for our, our overall vision for, for the district. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with that. I think the mix of materials, the colors that you've, you've exhibited are unique. And I think that is, is something that, where it might not have the appeal of a gigantic skyscraper, or it has in its own way, a very quality feel about it. And I commend you for kind of taking that risk and sticking to your, your initial plans, but also taking into account all the feedback that came at the sketch plan stage.
Yeah, it was helpful. It gave good guidance, it gave good feel. So, I mean, the process worked.
Yeah, I'm just gonna interject, let's keep it with the questions right now before we open up for public hearing. So, are there any more specific questions for the applicant? Do you, do you have any more questions for the applicant, Sue? You quit, okay. Do you have a question, not comment? Okay. Okay.
Suggestion question. On the west side of the building, where you kind of showed the dedicated pedestrian kind of covered pathway?
Yes.
Could you bring that up again and...
Right there.
So is the entire west side flexible or is it just kind of that southwest corner?
I mean, flexible.
I mean, you talked about, you know, the north side of this building has like a potential to be flexible use, like it could...
Oh, yes. This goes back partly, not, so in that, let me see if I get to a plan in this. I'll show you what we're thinking. I'll use this. The idea is that we, it's flexible to here and to this corner. I'll say there's breaks again in the garage. So it's not going to be 100% like the north side. So it'll be 50 to 60% flexible.
So I guess one suggestion I'd have, going back to the image of if you're walking that, a couple of things. Maybe there is some integration along the bare faces of those walls with some sort of public art to make it feel more like, like, hey, you are a pedestrian. This is like the spot for you. Because I think naturally people are going to walk underneath that and stay away from the cars, especially if this becomes a little more thoroughfare. Like if the retail kind of gets activated more. And then I don't see any lighting underneath there in this rendering, but there's going to be adequate.
For sure. This will be lit and have that aspect, absolutely. Otherwise, it wouldn't work.
And then you mentioned earlier, but we didn't hear about it much on this. I mean, the nature of this being an old gravel pit, you're going to be able to infiltrate a lot of the water onsite.
That's the beauty of this parcel, is that this section is sand. And so the idea is we're going to do infiltration along the perimeter and our stormwater system and let it percolate through the sand.
So if there is ways kind of in those pedestrian areas, we talk about it quite a bit. If there's subtle ways to educate the public walking through about what you're doing, where you're doing it. I think that could help just enhance that pedestrian experience as you're walking around the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Does there any more questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone from the public, they can come up to either one of the podiums. And you get three minutes. State your name and address. And welcome.
Madam Chair and Commission members, I'm John Carlson. I live at 4433 Ellsworth Drive. I'm about three blocks straight west of the proposed project. I'm sure I'll be able to see it from my backyard and I'm certain I'll be able to see it from the top floor of our house. I don't think I can support the project. There certainly are a lot of good aspects that have been brought out. But first, I'd like to say I don't think we should rush to judgment until the revised comprehensive plan comes out. We aren't quite sure how that's going to come out and this project may in fact conflict with it. I think you should stick to the current comprehensive plan with the height agreements that it has in it. The project would fit beautifully across France on the other side. And I think that's good for several reasons. One, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, and I don't want my children or grandchildren on France. I think you have a safety issue for them. I have questions about the quality of the building here. Mayor Hovland has said he wants iconic projects. Is this going to be an iconic project? You have to be kind of a magician to take 20% of your units and get very low rates for them. How do you make it economically work? You have to charge more for the other units that's there, so you're hurting the people that are renting those. You have to look for tax subsidies of one sort or another. And that hasn't been discussed here tonight. So the contractor, the developer, may be looking for very substantial tax incentives, one way or another, to make the project work. I look at it and everything that's been discussed, and I can see it working very nicely on the other side of France. But where it is right now, it reminds me of driving in St. Louis Park down Excelsior Boulevard with that big tunnel of buildings on the north side. Except they're only four stories high. Now we're talking about tunnels of buildings all along France that are going to be seven or eight stories high. The further north you go along France, those shadow problems become even worse. So if you set a precedent here and look for the next buildings to be of the same height, those shadow problems are going to be right in the neighborhoods, similar to Estelle. Housing issues. The rush to multifamily projects to me is a concern. What are we trying to do in Edina? Is there an optimum population that you're shooting for? I can't just see growth for growth's sake. Edina has 23,000 housing units now, 8,900 of which are apartments. With 2,000 new apartments planned right now for the projects that you're looking at, we will be up to 46% of the dwelling units in Edina as apartments. To me, you're certainly changing the nature of Edina. We're going to become an apartment city. And to me, apartment dwellers don't bring the same aspect to a city that our beautiful neighborhoods and neighbors do bring. They're the people that volunteer at the schools. They're the people that volunteer to coach the teams. They're the people that are improving their houses. They're generally families. Apartment dwellers may not be the extended family that you see in our neighborhoods. As apartment dwellers become the vast majority in Edina, they will control the city and change our nature. Am I done? So the developer gets an hour and 20 minutes. And as the sole person speaking against it, I get three. Thank you for my three minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Bill Griffith. I represent the Cedars of Edina, the Petersons. I think they'd be delighted to hear their property described as the Garden of Eden. Because they are very proud of the investments they've made there and very concerned about protecting those investments. Having said that, I think this project has come a long way. And I don't think that, my client thinks that. And they've had conversations with the developer and they appreciate the developer's sensitivity to the issues, particularly along the western edge. So the improvement of the setback, the step-down along the western edge, I think by a full story. The improvement of the buffering along their property and the conversations about connectivity between the two sites really is an advantage over what we saw at the sketch plan. And so the developer has listened and we appreciate that. Two concerns remain. One is the density. This is high-density for this area. This western edge of France Avenue for many, many years has been kind of the step-down from the higher-density areas of the east or to the east. And so your Southdale plan has a great vision, but there is a need for protection of those single-family and other multifamily neighborhoods. There are 600 units, 600 families, we would say, living in those apartments at Cedars of Edina. And so they need to be protected as well. Protected from traffic, protected from other concerns. But essentially, this development makes sense. So the one remaining issue is that access on France Avenue. I think it would be nothing short of a disaster to lose that access and focus all of the traffic for not just this site, but probably 7200 on one intersection at Gallagher, just a few feet from the drive that serves the Cedars. So I would say that shouldn't be something we hope or dream about. That should really be a condition of going forward. Because once that project is built, the leverage to push the county to provide for that right-in, right-out goes away. Then you only have one development and there's pressure then on 72nd Street to provide that access. So I think all of us collectively, the developer, the Cedars, the city, need to make that an imperative of this project. I use the Whole Foods area and the Lunds-Birley's area at least a couple of times a week. I come into your community and have my lunch and do my grocery shopping and those right-in, right-outs work very, very well. And so to lose that, to say that's not going to be a part of this project or we might hope and aspire to have that at a later date, I think it really sets us up for a problem. So I appreciate the time tonight. I appreciate, again, the developers. On behalf of my client, I appreciate the developers' movement on this project. And would just really ask the city to make sure that right-in, right-out happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Carlson, 4433 Ellsworth Drive. Live very close to this development that's being proposed. And all I see is another ugly apartment building, another ugly combined retail office and residential building. Right now, when I drive up 72nd Street, I look at the Birley's apartment buildings. And every time I see them, I just get irritated. So now when I take a right-hand turn off 72nd Street, going down France, I'm going to see on my right side another set of buildings that are ugly that are going to irritate me as well. I live in the area, I see these buildings every day, and I just don't think the architecture of this building that's being proposed is good. I think that a lot more thought needs to be put into this as to getting quality construction. I do have a question about these apartments as to whether they're luxury apartments. Nobody's really discussed that. Everywhere else in Edina, there's luxury apartments going in. And are these luxury apartments or aren't they? And if they're not, why not? So I'd like an answer to that. And I think that right now, when I go to the Wings Building, over, trying to make a turn off the Wings Building onto Gallagher Drive is almost impossible right now. So I don't see any way that you can push this traffic onto Gallagher. So I don't see how this development can go forward without having an understanding about whether or not you can push that traffic onto France with that cutout. But every time you make a cutout, you make it less pedestrian-friendly as well. So that has to be considered. But right now, I encourage you to go, go to the Wings Building, take a right-hand turn on Gallagher to get to France and see how difficult it already is to make that turn. So please do not approve this project to go forward with the comprehensive plan change and rezoning change until some of these issues are resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anybody else from the public that'd like to speak? Is there a motion?
A move to close the public hearing?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Back to Planning Commission for discussion. I think we could probably answer a couple of the comments or questions that were made. And just also with the public, it is tough when you only get the three minutes. So I really, if you've got anything in writing, you know, submit that and, you know, we'll go to the council. So it's hard. We understand that. But so, one of the other things like TIF, that's not, we can't even address that. So that's not, you know, help me with any of these.
Yeah, that's a decision for the City Council.
That's the City Council. So same thing with like what type of apartments, luxury or not. We're just, our purview is the design, is it meeting the code, comp plan, zoning? That's not really for us to discuss.
Isn't that a question that can be asked, though? I mean, I was going to ask that, actually.
But it's really, it's not our, it's not our purview.
But it's information, so.
Why? What does it...
If the developer's willing to talk about it, I think that it might be.
I, you know, it's not, it's not what we should be basing our decision upon.
No, no. But on the other hand, we're all in a comprehensive planning process now. And there is some question, which is kind of like the elephant in the room, of what types of housing we need in the next decade. And we have been only seeing one type of housing. So I mean, again, I, we have no control over what the developer wants to do. But it would be good to know if that's the type of housing that we're adding to. So I would say it's a question that we could put to the developer. He could decline to answer, but I can't say that it's something that the Planning Commission should be forbidden from speaking about.
Question with that too, just quick. Because surely we've seen a very similar housing type proposed and different plans and proposals. But I would say one of the draws to previous ones is something different and used as a selling point to us. So for that to not like weigh into our decision-making, I mean, it gets to be a blurred line. Like, for instance, Estelle was, you know, part of the selling point to most of us. I would say it was the fact that it was owner-occupied with condos. And that was told to us, we weren't asked. That was, so, I mean, maybe that could be clarified better. I know you did the last meeting, but up until then, it wasn't that clear.
Yeah, just as long as you can't base your decision on whether it's owner-occupied or rental or based on how much they're going to charge for the apartments.
Sure.
It's information. You just can't base your decision on this, we're going to approve this because it's a high-income project.
Yeah, sure. But, I mean, if it's a PUD, I mean, I think some of that is, what's the makeup of that PUD? You know, of, is it apartments or is it condos or is it office or...
Can't base your decision on that, but it's information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's see if there's anything else that we had a question that we could answer at this point. And I think that that was it for now. So let's bring it back up to the Planning Commission. I guess if you want to ask that question, as long as one understands we can't be, you know, I just, sometimes I feel like we get into some of those details that don't really, you know. But so with that, I'm opening it up to the Planning Commission. Got it on both sides for comments. And now is when we can say what we think.
I have a question. So you mentioned that you can't like base your decision off of the types of like housing? Is, are like affordable housing units part of that calculus? Can they be?
Yeah, excellent question. Because that is something that's clear within our PUD that we're hoping to gain affordable housing units.
Okay, got it.
Yes, that is definitely part of, can be part of your discussion and basing a decision on that.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Strauss.
Yeah, I think this proposal just hits on so many issues. One I found really persuasive was the Mick Johnson follow-up memo. It shows that, I mean, you not only saw the principles, saw what the Southdale area plan was, you've embraced them. There are a couple of points. That north side, Commissioner Bennett brought it up. I found that real encouraging that that look on the north side was kind of contingent on the 7200 project. So, I mean, that was, to me, the weakest kind of face. And that's encouraging that that will, because I love the Gallagher Drive side. It's something. This is not, this is just kind of a comment. And I don't know how often we've been hearing issues dealing with Kennebun County. And it's like they're designing our streets here. And anything that happens on those streets, it's sort of, I don't know if you're carrying all the water on this sort of. I'm hoping that there's someone, that you're getting some help. Because I think that 72nd Street is so important. But, go ahead if you...
Very quickly, I mean, what I hope would happen is, within your resolution, you can maybe put that within your resolution to support access off of France Avenue. But we are going to approach council. And council has committed to us to help us on this endeavor. So, yeah, we are asking the weight of the city to sort of, what I'm going to use the term, protect France and encourage the pedestrian nature of it. So absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Brubaker.
So I just want to, I want to applaud how thoroughly you guys have thought through the design, how it fits into the whole Southdale plan, what you could do with the architecture to make it less boxy. I think you've done a really great job. And, you know, it may look even better if you had the support to go higher in the neighborhood, but we know that that's difficult. So I think given that, you've done a great job. You also did a really good job of describing some of those pieces like the underground water and, you know, obviously making it really pedestrian-friendly. You know, providing the public space, the public art, and then the affordable housing units. So I think this is great. So I think this is great, and I fully support it.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of there, too. I think what I appreciate most with this project compared to other ones that we've seen is its commitment to long-term thinking and adaptability. I think oftentimes, the stuff we see is so locked in, and it doesn't, it doesn't look forward to the next 50 years, let alone next five or 10, and how the market might change and react. And the fact that multiple sides of this building, both for the public realm as well as the retail office space, is just open to be flexible and adapt to, you know, what's going on is just huge. And, I mean, you know, for that, that point alone is just, I mean, that is such a huge sticking point to me for this project, and where you guys have shifted since the sketch plan. Again, I'm more of a proponent of height along France to just, you know, give some variety to that architecture. I think what you have right now is as beautiful as you could do with the limitation of six, seven stories. But I also support this. Thank you.
It certainly has my support. One of the questions that I'd ask at this phase, so much of the building is pedestrian, thank you, but the delight for a pedestrian is in the details, and it's too early to finish those details, but they're critically important to maintain that scale. You know it, I know that you'll do it. I'm curious to see it. I'm, I'm as curious to see the evolution of that piece as we have seen in the last piece, but thank you. I think it is a delight to work as hard as, as folks have on the Southdale area plan and discover that, lo and behold, it bears fruit. So thank you very much.
Yeah, very similar comments generally. Mr. DeVos' team, I really appreciate the flexibility you showed on taking, and creativity you showed in taking the feedback from the sketch plan and incorporating it into the presentation. I mean, I really appreciate it and, and thank you. I do have a question, though, about the, I am concerned about the France Avenue, and I'm, so I kind of, I have a question for the applicant, perhaps for Kerry. And I definitely agree with the applicant's position that we should support their conversations with the county. I think it's important for, I think we're mutually benefit from that. But I, Kerry, are you able to kind of walk us through the pros and cons of conditioning approval on getting that France Avenue access?
Yeah, certainly. It, it helps in making our argument if we go back to the 7200 project. That, the City Council approved that project subject to they had to have that access. Now, it's a little different in that with this property, they have access off Gallagher that can support this project. That access off France really benefits the property to the north, more so than even this project. But we can, yeah, we can certainly put that condition in. You've heard the applicant is agreeable to that, that the project would be conditioned on obtaining that right of what, that, that right in, right out of, on France.
So just a dialogue with you, if you could say, you know, it sounds like you're saying it is not as important for 7250 as it would be for 7200. Are there any benefits from doing it? Is it a benefit to approach to the county if it's written one way or the other?
I think it shows.
Off the top of your head.
Yeah, it shows that the city is serious about really wanting that access point. So, yeah, I think it's an important condition to add.
Thanks, Kerry. I know that was off the top of your head, so thanks.
It seems like that the real challenge is the discussion with Hennepin County about what France Avenue is. Is it American Boulevard times two, or is it France Avenue a city, a street of a city in Edina that serves the people of Edina? And that's a much deeper and longer conversation, but this certainly opens the door to it, and a major change in ideas. One of the things to support the argument might be some help from traffic about that, but my sense on France Avenue is I can drive down France Avenue at 45 miles an hour and get through the length of it in no time at all, and then wait for five minutes at the stoplight to get on 494. So I really wonder why we want to go through France Avenue so rapidly. And it seems like that's where the question is, and it isn't about just this right turn off France. It's what, what is this street? Who does it serve, and who's realist?
Could the applicant address the condition? Go forward, okay, sorry.
Let's finish, okay.
I guess now that I'm certain I can explicitly advocate for it, I think the big selling point for me is the extra affordable housing. I just sort of want to mention, I think there's really absolutely no reason to believe someone who lives in an apartment as opposed to a single-family home is somehow less capable of contributing to the schools or community. And I think that just the broader theme of pushing towards inclusivity in Edina is definitely a good idea. One thing, I sort of like the idea of the signage, and the reason I think that is because I don't really understand the argument that like a lack of enforcement makes it a bad idea, because if you take that line of thinking to its conclusion, that would say that there shouldn't be any sort of laws or regulations at all at the point where there isn't universal enforcement. I think that the power of a sign like that isn't that it would stop every single person from doing it, but that the power of it is that it's a deterrent. And at the point where even one person is stopped from using this as a shortcut, that's better than zero people if there's no sign at all. And I, in my opinion, that's why Minneapolis keeps putting up these signs, not expecting to stop everyone from bad behavior, but to deter at least some people. So I think that could be a net positive for a development like this, but overall, I advocate for it to a strong degree.
You good? You good?
Okay, so for me, it's really, here I have to understand the, what we're being asked to do. Kerry, this is going to require a comprehensive plan amendment, but again, why is it that we are changing the entire OR district? And is there an alternative to still have this approval but have it specific to this parcel? My concern is that previously, the same comp plan amendment came up for Estelle, and at that time, we wanted to increase the density from 30 units per acre to 60 units per acre in the OR, and increase the height from four stories, 48 feet, up to 26 stories, 360 feet. So we are using one project to define the OR for many other areas, for the entire OR area. That, to me, I don't see the logic in that. So obviously, we realize this is not compliant with OR. Perhaps it needs to be removed from OR. That's another question to you. Is that a possibility, that it's just, rather than going through a comp plan amendment, or maybe it's still requiring amendment, but the better way to do it is, rather than change the entire OR district, we change that parcel to something else?
Well, that's possible. I guess you could, you could rezone it to, or re-guide it. High-density residential is the designation of the property to the west. The density there would have to be increased also, you know, as we're seeing. High-density is not 30 units an acre, as defined currently in the comprehensive plan. So that would be one option. I see this as, the comp plan still says between, the 30 units an acre is the max. With this project, it allows the council and the Planning Commission to make recommendations on projects that exceed 30 units an acre, up to 80. So you're still reviewing projects on an individual basis. Most of the property that's zoned on that west side has, has this office-type zoning. So it's still going to require review by Planning Commission on a case-by-case basis. We don't have to amend the comprehensive plan in order to increase that density. We're still looking at the same, you know, we're looking at the traffic impacts. So in a way, the amendment, it is on, it's still a case-by-case basis, anytime you're going over 30 units an acre.
But you, you, if we, if we amend it, we're going to be changing it to 80 units per acre. Is that what you're, isn't that what we're doing?
Without amending the comprehensive plan, the council can go up to 80 units an acre, correct?
Right, so that's, so if we amend it, you won't have to be going to, to reviewing it, it would just be?
Yes, you'd still review, a site plan review, a rezoning, you're still reviewing these projects the same as you do now.
Correct.
It's just not an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Correct, correct, okay. So the OR residential district was defined, when it was created, as the four stories and 48 feet. That's why it's on the west side of France. That was what was agreed, and I, I seem to recall, that is true. That was the purpose of the step-down, the transition zone. So if we now change the definition of OR to be an increased density, and I'm surprised that you did not include the height here, so does it not need to specify the height?
You can change the height through PUD. That's a result of the comprehensive plan amendment that went along with the Hazelden Apartments.
Yep.
So through, the zoning is four stories, 48 feet. They're requesting flexibility to go above that through the PUD.
But previously, when we were looking at this for Estelle, you actually stated we were changing the density in the comp plan amendment, and also the height, to allow up to 26 stories and 360 feet. We no longer need to specify the, the height anymore? Is that what you're saying in this comp plan amendment for OR?
The flexibility language was approved by the City Council at their last meeting, based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission as part of the Hazelden Apartments project.
But that was only MXC?
That was for the entire Southdale district in regard to height. That was that comprehensive plan amendment regarding height, where you had the discussion about separating the, the two issues? So that's been approved, so we don't have to amend the, the comprehensive plan regarding height.
So we didn't separate the two issues, so, yeah.
They were separated, but the council approved both.
In parcel. All right. Well, I, my recommendation would be that I really feel strongly that it should not affect the entire OR district, that if there is some other means to, to allow this to happen without having to affect the other OR district. The reason I say that is because, again, we're about ready to do a comp plan update. We might actually change, who knows, the OR district definition, the boundaries. We may feel that that doesn't even apply to some areas of the west side of France. So in order to allow that opportunity, I would like to see that we not change the entire OR district density at this point. So Kerry, is there some other way that we could kind of word that as an, as a, or are there some alternatives you could propose?
I guess before we went there, the Planning Commission may want to discuss if that's the direction that the, that the commission would like to take.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess my comments are pretty much the, I think I really appreciate the responsiveness the developer has shown, both to the process of the sketch plan and feedback from, before I was on the commission and the City Council, and the responsiveness they've shown to other developer, you know, other property owners in the area. And I think that a lot of thought has been put into, you know, making this a quality project that, you know, I didn't have to ask about biking or pedestrian facilities that were kind of built in and thought about beforehand. The thought about, you know, the planning for having the, the transit and, and the Nine Mile Creek Trail across the street was kind of already built in and stuff. So I think it's just a, a lot of thought was put into this, and I think a, a lot was changed in response to feedback. So I think it's a, seems like a real, and, and the 20% is really great for the affordable housing. So I think it's a great project.
Well, echoing a lot of the comments, I think this is a great project, too, and I really appreciate that you listened to what we said during the sketch plan. With some of the comments about this conflicting with the comp plan or potentially conflicting with it, and that it's not completed and we should wait, you know, I don't agree with that. I think we, you know, just working with the Greater Southdale large area plan, whatever we want to call it, I think they are really meeting a lot of what we've been, you know, our goals for that, so I don't have a concern with it being conflicting with what we will be actually implementing. I do have a concern with conditioning approval with the France access. I guess if we're getting, you know, the experts saying that will still work without the France Avenue, I mean, I totally agree that we want to support, you know, as much as we can to say, you should totally get us that, and Hennepin County, we got to work with them, and maybe we, I don't know, we'll keep working on it. But I don't, I would hate to see, I guess I don't have total faith that that's going to happen, and then, you know, this whole project would be denied, or you'd have to come back through again. So that would be my concern with that. Something with what you're saying. I don't have a concern with the total comp plan amendment for the total district, because I think we have enough layers to still go through the review process for, you know, density, height, the PUD. So I, I think we've commonly done that when it's been a P, a comp plan amendment for that whole district, so I, that's just my comment, that I wouldn't, you know, support looking at alternatives or like kind of, I know it's not spot zoning, but spot comp planning, or, and, go for it.
I would like to proceed with a motion to approve, with the belief that, with the assignment to council, that they're closer to the France Avenue piece than we are. They've had those discussions with county, they will continue to have that discussion with county, and to put the burden on them to make the decision about how they want to proceed in that regard. Therefore, the motion would simply approve the project as presented, with the comprehensive plan amendments as presented.
So I was still making comments, but I'll add comments to that. So my other comment was, I'm still kind of concerned with, can I be making, continuing my comments as part of the motion?
Certainly, you can, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, now you can continue the discussion.
Okay, I'll continue my comments. I know you want to get home, but just, so my other comments, concerns are that the Wooner, if I think that, again, if France, you don't get the access on France, that's going to be your main road, you know, on the west side. And so I think you just need to articulate or really give a little bit more thought to kind of separate that and make it more protective, because, again, I just don't see the people wandering down there. There's going to be cars going in and out there all the time. Same on the north side. I think you really need to focus on that and make that better. That was it. Did you have another comment to the, okay?
I just want to, I just want to go on record that I will support this motion, but I, I would prefer that it was subject to France Avenue access, but I will support the motion.
Have a, a motion that's been seconded in? Any other discussion?
Question was already posed, but, I mean, if this, and I feel like this site itself, as the neighbor even tested, too. I mean, if that access doesn't get permitted, I think this site fails in a way. I think it'll still work, but it definitely doesn't capture what we're seeing, especially with the potential for that to be really retail-focused over there. So, I mean, I would, I would rather have the condition in there if that helps get it approved quicker by the county and/or just the potential for it to get approved, or is it this close?
I don't know if it would significantly help it. It would, if that can, if the project were conditioned on the city obtaining that now, the project could die. If it's approved with the city continuing to try to obtain that access and we still have the easements, they can still go ahead with their project. Maybe two years from now, we can obtain that right in, right out off, off France. We don't know the We don't know the timing of when 7200 is going to develop or if it redevelops, but it's, it still buys us some, buys us some more time to continue those negotiations with the county.
Okay. And then, maybe the applicant could explain if, say it is two years out, what is that, what's that sequencing going to look like on that north side? I mean, would they be able to do a little more enhanced public realm just for the pedestrians that still use the property and et cetera?
I don't think we can bring them in for a question during our motion, but just-
If you wanted to.
It's my understanding, they would still build it, they just wouldn't have the curb cut.
Yeah, they'll have the pedestrians, so you'll still have access to the retail. Okay, so, we have a motion, a second. I think we're done with discussion. Is there, so, all in favor? Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, next up is community comment. It's amazing, I have not, I did not skip over that this time. Is there anyone here from the community that would like to make a comment? With that, I close the, thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Reports and recommendation, thank you. Do you memorize this stuff? You just, is this?
This is, I live for the agenda.
Oh, my God. I read it too, but I don't remember any of that. So, are there any reports or recommendations? Nope. Correspondence and petitions? Nope. Chair and member comments, this is where we, this is where you get to go. Okay.
So, I just, based off of the last planning commission meeting where the 4,500 France was proposed, I just want to reiterate that there were some required developer commitments that kind of had to work with the city. So, I just continue to keep pushing the city to start taking initiative on some of those things with the property and business owners in that area, while the developer gets their ducks in a row. And hopefully, we can see some more, I don't know, continuity between the two.
So, you mean like the parking, and is that what you're, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, parking as well as connection across Sunnyside. There were, there were opportunities to make that safer with different treatments that could be done as part of this development, if the city were willing to put some capital as well as the developer versus kick it down the road again. Pun definitely intended.
Do you have an update on, oh, go, what's that, Kerry?
If I could just piggyback, so, the city council had that same discussion on the project, and they watched the planning commission meeting like they always do, and they picked up on that comment. So, it's definitely on the city council's radar to start to think about some of those improvements. So, we're starting the CIP process. So, it's, it's good, your comments were heard, and I believe they'll start to look at that.
Go for it, Commissioner.
Yeah, excuse me, to continue on Jimmy's thought there, not only across Sunnyside, but also on France. And I mean, there, we border with Minneapolis. But with this project we saw tonight, you know, this also borders France. France is like kind of our main street that kind of goes through a lot of different of the small area plans and neighborhoods. And I think it's incumbent upon the city council to, to start, you know, we've had this as a bike and pedestrian-friendly conduit through the city for 10 years now, and not much progress has been made. And a lot of it's because of the county, and I think we need to start being more adamant with the county and, and making it into something. And as we do all these developments, it's sort of, it seems like this is an opportunity to kind of redo the road as we go along. I mean, I don't know the technicalities of how hard that is, but we should be able to do something so that we don't have to redo it when we decide what we're going to do, you know? But then, beyond that topic, I just want to say that I was on the transportation commission before I joined this commission, and one thing I helped kick off was Circulator for senior citizens. And that project now, I went to the latest meeting, and it looks like June will probably be the time for that to kick off. And so, they're, they're working on, they have a list of potential sites of stops that they'll have. And so, that'll go through kind of the Southdale area, it'll go up to Grandview area, and then over to 50th and France, and then kind of back down. So, that looks like a really wonderful project that's really gotten far along, and the city has devoted money to it. So, it's a, so it's a very admirable thing, so that's going well. Then one more thing is that the, the city council had a town hall meeting last week, and I attended that over the weekend. And there was a lot of concern from residents that they don't understand the process, right? So, they don't know when they can provide feedback and everything. And I wonder if the city can do something to, whether it's a graphic or part of a website or something that would allow people to understand, because, you know, we've got the sketch plan process, and we've got the open meeting process, and then it's the city council. And, you know, I think that can be really confusing for, it is confusing for our residents. And I think we need to, as a city, make that a better process, or more obvious process. Thanks.
We actually have, I believe, well, I'd have to double-check, but before we had the new website, a lot of things didn't all carry over. But we had a development review process, and it outlined when residents could chime in. You know, it was a step-by-step, this is what happens with the rezoning. I will double-check our website and make sure that is still up there, because I think that is a useful tool. When we get calls, we would refer people to that.
I move away from you. That, so that Circulator, actually, anyone can use it, right?
Yeah, they're not going to throw people off if they're not seniors. It's aimed at seniors, the, the nonprofit that we're working with called DARTS, their reason for being is, is for helping seniors. So, if it develops into something that's not primarily senior-focused, they're probably going to back away from and say, you know, good luck, you know, enjoy it, but we're not going to be doing it, because they're, they're handling all the, you know, day-to-day stuff with it. But that doesn't mean the city couldn't then take, if it does become really popular, it doesn't mean the city couldn't take it over. But right now, it's aimed at seniors, it's going to stop its senior, you know, senior residences and such. But it's going to go to, to places that everybody wants to go to, you know, commerce, retail, and that sort of thing, so.
Do you guys have updates on 40, or whatever you, 70th and Cahill? Do you have a, okay.
70th and Cahill, we are, we maybe thought we were looking at, looking at a final, or, you know, a draft in this kind of final stages. We may not be that close, so, we're not up against, I think, a deadline like maybe we were. So, but tomorrow night, we, we get back to it and, but we may, it may not be as close as maybe we originally were hoping to be, but we'll get there.
About your thing, is that okay? So, do you guys, how's 50th and France, is that getting kicked off?
As I understand it, we have four applicants for the work group. We're certainly appealing for more folks to apply. So, if there's anybody out there that's watching this on TV and thinks 50th and France is an important place for Edina, then we'd like to see your application.
Deadline's May 3rd?
The deadline.
May 3rd.
Okay, so, there's still time.
There's still time. Not a lot, but there's still time. Ian?
That's exactly right.
So, this was yours?
Well, I, I just wanted to respond to John. You, and Ian, you, feel free to go out there and solicit individuals. We, we had to, yeah, especially on the business community side, and to get the right mix, obviously. You can't force them to apply, but if you ask, sometimes it, it results.
We did, we went to it.
Yeah, we did, you're right. Okay, so, on your, at your desk, I just wanted to announce that there is a community housing forum about affordable housing. And as you know, that's a pretty hot topic right now. It seems to keep coming up when we review proposals. But in addition to that, in, in light of the comp plan as well, our housing chapter is going to really emphasize that, and things are becoming defined a little more. So, this will be a really good forum. It is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters, so I'm just encouraging you to attend. I'm going to be attending Thursday, May 31st, 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Southdale Library.
Any, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.